...special committee meeting was called by Mayor Reser to discuss various appropriations. The meeting was called to clarify staff at 45 p.m. Number two, various appropriations.
Uh, we need appropriation in the general fund. Program one, security persons and property, police department, capital outlay in the amount of $3,829 for new body armor. And the police department is qualified for a grant reimbursement of 75% of the cost in the amount of $23,021.75. And we also need appropriation in the general fund, that's program seven, general government, for the auditor materials and supplies in the amount of $2,000. This is for the attendance of myself and my staff to the software solutions hall conference, which includes three days training for our new software system.
Yes, does the $3,829 is coming out of the general fund?
Yes.
And then will be reimbursed $23,021.75?
Yes.
So that the 25% difference is coming out of the general fund, not the money that was already allocated in the police department for the year?
Correct.
That's what I remember there.
Thank you.
No question. Motion is approved. Second.
First by Kevin, second by Amy. All in favor?
Aye.
Something more technical with me. How much is your charge?
Some...
Second.
And at 6:47 p.m.
Any more? Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Hang on.
More grass down there.
Can I come here? I can, it's called to order. Please stand and join the special committee.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All call please.
Keever.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Wireball.
Here.
Truka.
Here.
Sack.
Here.
Foat.
Here.
Shaw.
Here.
Thank you. Before you have the meeting from the August 8th, 2019 special meeting, I need a motion to accept those minutes.
So moved. Sorry.
Motion by Mr. Foat, second by Mr. Truka. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you. This is where we grant permission for visitors to speak. Is there anyone that would like to address council this evening? No one? Moving on to communications and petitions.
We've got three letters here, all addressed to city council. First is dated August 14th from the city planning commission regarding items approved by the planning commission for council review and approval. Dear council president, the Visirus City Planning Commission, met on Monday, August 12th, 2019. It is requested that the following items approved by the planning commission be submitted to the appropriate council committees for review. One, proposed new residential use for transitional housing for displaced people experiencing homelessness. The yet-to-be-defined residential use, which would require a many of zoning ordinances as no such use currently exists as a permitted use, is being proposed for the intended development of the Visirus Outreach and Restoration Network or BORN Hope Center, the location of which is being proposed at 251 West Stone, including the adjacent lots between West Stone Street and Apple Street, and is the subject of the related matter of the zoning reclassification submitted to council reference in the letter dated July 22, 2019. And two, proposed zoning reclassification of properties from urban neighborhood residential or R3 to limited industrial commercial or LIC. Properties proposed for zoning reclassification include 940 South Highland Avenue, parcel 0800-1886-9000 in lot 3149, 948 South Highland Avenue, 0800-163-23000 in lot 3148, 919 Faver Street, 0800-13994000 in lot 3139, and 953 Faver Street, 0800-17148000 in lot 3140 and 3141. See attached, thank you Mayor Jeff Reser, here in tiny commission, and you'll see the proposed zoning reclassification attached. That needs to be referred to the plating committee.
Okay, I need a motion to refer this to Plating.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Foat. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you.
We have another letter addressed to city council dated August 14th. This is from Landon Hill, the city zoning administrator, regarding development restrictions for non-conforming residential lots in non-residential zoning districts. Dear Madam President, I have received several applications recently from applicants wishing to construct accessory structures on their legally non-conforming residential lots located in non-residential zoning districts. These accessory structures are subject to the development standards for the zoning district in which they are located. Consequently, these properties face development restrictions for accessory structures that are likely to be much more restrictive than their standard residential lot counterparts. I have attached a case study to provide an example of the specific issue. There is an existing provision to allow for these legally non-conforming properties to alter the residential structure itself without adhering to the non-residential zoning district development standards. Specifically, Visirus codified ordinance 1151.04C states any residential structure which is non-conforming due to the fact that it's being in a non-residential zoning district may be enlarged, enlarged, extended, reconstructed, or structurally altered, provided it meets the requirements of the adjacent or most approximate R district. However, there is no provision that takes into account the impact that non-residential zoning districts' development standards have on residents' ability to develop their property through construction of accessory structures, e.g. sheds decks, et cetera. The applicants are able to apply for an area variance through the MORTZ zoning appeals to pursue approval to construct their accessory structures. However, I feel good management should allow for an accommodation in the code through a provision similar to 1151.04C intended for accessory structures, which could address the inconsistencies around the issue. Sincerely, Landon Hill Zoning Administrator, there are attachments, and that also needs to be referred to the plating committee.
Here, I need a motion to submit this to Plating.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Foat, second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. That item is put into Plating Committee.
We have a notice to city council from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control. This is putting us in notice of a liquor license transfer from Visirus Suburban Lanes Inc. to 75 Papley Avenue and Patios, Visirus, Ohio, to Crawford County, Ohio Entertainment, LLC, doing business as Visirus Suburban Lanes, 975 Papley Avenue and Patios, Visirus, Ohio. That listing through referred to the Health and Safety Committee.
Okay. I need a motion to submit this to Health and Safety.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Foat. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. That is placed into Health and Safety Committee. Uh, state committee reports. Uh, Mr. Wireball, can we get started, please?
All right. Visirus City Council Joint Special Committee meeting, uh, Monday, August 12th, 2019, began at 6:00 p.m. Members present, Dan Wireball, Bruce Truka, Doug Foat, Andrew Shaw, Mark McKeever, Kevin Myers, Monica Sett, Ashley. National night out on Tuesday, August 6th pushed councils regularly scheduled full meeting to Thursday, August 8th, which pushed council joint regular committee to Monday, August 12th. Joint Special Committee meeting was called to order by Wireball at 6:00 p.m. There was no public participation, and the Order of Committee Business Finance Committee did not meet because of the lack of form. We were not the Public Lands and Buildings Committee, uh, speaking at 6:01 p.m. Members present for that was Bruce Truka, Doug Foat, Mark McKeever, Dan Wireball, Chair. Oh. Members present was Bruce Truka, Doug Foat, and Dan Wireball. Pines Reservoir. The city has received a chief's order from the O D N R pertaining to the poor condition of the dam at the Pines Reservoir, and has three options regarding the property. Repairing the reservoir to bring it within state compliance, which could cost more than $1 million, reaching the dam, or selling the reservoir as if. Pat Murphy, 153 Washington Square, has expressed an interest in purchasing the property and assuming the cost of any repair and related liability. The following people spoke in support of the city retaining ownership of the reservoir. Hertha and Mike Herzl, Hetzel, 3909 Stetza Road, Ray Tidoff, 210 Ethel Street, Candice Yokum, 946 South Walnut Street, Kathy Fuller, 1107 South Sandusky Avenue, and Bill Stucker, 205 North Spring Street. The Hetzels aren't Visirus residents. Law Director Rob Ratliff noted that the city has appealed the O D N R's chief order with a hearing scheduled for October 17th, and that the city needs to have a plan for the reservoir by then. Mayor Jeff Reser added that grants are not available for the dam's remediation, and that expenses would have to be covered by loans, which could be paid back over time, and user fees, which would translate into a 12% to 13% increase in water rates for one year. The committee decided to schedule a special meeting on the issue and ask the administration to approach Pat Murphy about precisely what he would do with the property. A date and time for the meeting will be set during council's last regular meeting on Tuesday, August 20th. Executive session property. Mayor Jeff Reser requested an executive session of council to consider the purchase of real property and personal property, whether it is tangible or intangible, or to consider the sale of real or personal property by competitive bid or see section 121.22G2. Foat made a motion to request same, with second by Truka. We'll call vote. Wireball, yea. Truka, yea. Foat, yea. Shaw, yea. Motion carrying council recessed to executive session at 7:05. Truka made a motion to adjourn executive session, with a second by Foat. We'll call vote. Wireball, yea. Truka, yea. Foat, yea. Shaw, yea. Motion carrying council adjourned, executive adjourned executive session at 7:17 p.m. There was no report or referral. Wireball recessed. Public Lands and Buildings Committee at 7:18 p.m.
Questions or comments regarding the report? Okay, we need to schedule this, uh, special public lands and buildings meeting on the Pines Reservoir next week is what we discussed. Actually, it's a very busy week next week for various things going on. And Monday, the 26th, is that available to everybody to be here?
Sounds like a winner.
Yeah, sounds like it.
Yes?
Yes.
I can't hear you, Deb's nodding.
Sure does. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. What time do you want to do it? Do you want to do it early, at 6 o'clock? Do you want to wait till 7 o'clock? Which works best for everybody? 6.
I agree. I concur. I say 6.
6:00 p.m.? Does that give everybody time? Okay. Uh, then that special meeting for, uh, the Pines Reservoir discussion and public lands and meaning, well, lands and buildings will be scheduled for, uh, August the 26th at 6:00 p.m. here in council chambers. Okay?
Okay.
Would you like to continue?
Yeah, I really would.
Here's the law.
Public participation, uh, Bill Stucker, 205 North Spring Street, said the city should not be considering additional parcels of property when it's debating the sale of the Pines Reservoir. Wireball asked for a motion to adjourn the special council, special, the joint special committee. Motion by Foat, second by Shaw, to adjourn at 7:18 p.m. Motion passed.
Okay, thank you very much. The finance committee met in special session, uh, this evening, Tuesday, August the 20th at 6:45 p.m. The SAC. Minutes, please.
Thursday, council committee special planning meeting at 6:45 to 6:47 p.m. Members present were Kevin Myers, Andrew Shaw, and myself. Number one, the special finance committee meeting was called by Mayor Jeff Reser to discuss various appropriations. The meeting was called to order by SAC at 6:45 p.m. Number two, various appropriations. Number one, um, there was appropriation in the general fund, program one, security persons and property, police department, capital outlay in the amount of $3,829 for new body armor. The police department is qualified for a grant reimbursement of 75% of the cost of the equipment in the amount of $23,021.75. Number two, appropriation in the general fund, program seven, general government auditor, materials and supplies in the amount of $2,000 for the software solutions hall conference and three-day training for staff, for all the staffs and their new software system. There was a motion by Kevin, and a second by Amy. All in favor, motion passed. Number three, SAC adjourned the special lands committee meeting at 6:47 p.m.
Any questions or comments regarding that special finance committee meeting? Thank you. Uh, traffic commission, we don't have any minutes. Are there any traffic questions that you'd like to address from the mayor this evening?
Is there another traffic commission we scheduled? Yeah. We don't have one scheduled.
Okay. None scheduled right now? Anyone else? They've started up on North Sandusky. Yep, they all, those are out.
Our road's a nice little mall down. Is it going to be starting over, um, White Stone? East Man's was your private security, they're just yourself.
And there was a discussion last evening, residents in, what is it, Area 2?
3.
3?
3A.
3A last night were in, uh, talking, going over the plans and everything that, uh, for the stormwater separation project in their area, which is, uh, what is that?
Highland, Baylor.
Highland, Baylor, in that area. They were in last night. About eight, eight people, we're right in for it. And we went over, then the engineers went over with them, uh, what, uh, what to expect. And, uh, they met the people that were going to be there, working, the engineer that's going to be the inspector, and they met, and they also met the foreman that's going to be there, and, and we couldn't give them an exact time of when they're starting, but as that becomes available, you're going to make that known to them.
I have to start sometime late fall, um, and, uh, finish in early spring. If except for the paving, we'll have to come back and, and we'll be filled in some of the trenches with stone, but we'll slot that stuff and fill in sometime around next summer.
Okay. I need a motion then to accept the committee minutes and related committee reports collectively.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Wireball, second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you. We have the report of city officers, starting with Mayor Reser.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, we had a big weekend last weekend. Paul, you got your film brought with you? I know, uh, it was, I mean, everything was wonderful. It was a fantastic, I think it was the best ever. Every year it's, I think it's getting better. Superlatives are indicated, and my dad are well deserved, from top to bottom. Many of you were there to be, yielding ceremonies. Very touching, veterans were honored. It just, feeling so nice there. The art show was fantastic this year. Much, much improved, it was light and beautiful art. A lot of talent here. Praiser Graves. Lot of friendly vendors, and I hope they're all happy. I think they were, and there was, just an ago, we talked to some of them, they were, many of them run out of food. That's a good way to be. It is Saturday night, so lots of people to thank. So many people scooping around town in the carts, back and forth. They were in a hurry to, to put out fires or make things better. You know, there's so many good members of, of, working on this, all volunteers. Larry's, uh, done a fantastic job on this. Kevin's the assistant director. I'm not sure all you know him, but he's, he's...
Sitting there like, oh, Kevin, yeah. Oh, there he is. Yeah, nice guy.
Yeah. I heard he's nice, yeah. See, you know, those guys, they don't get much sleep. I mean, they really don't. You take it to family, but you don't let them know, you know, how grateful we are. Their community, it's, it's the Visirus Broward special. One of the things that, you know, I, I proposed early in my administration, that we partake in these days, you know, we shouldn't be, uh, it should be us versus them, it should be us. And thank goodness the council has agreed to do that. I hope they continue that tradition. You know, Sunday when you wake up, you're exhausted, you know? But, you know, it's kind of a, it's kind of a good kind of exhausted, you're just, just so much fun. My family was in town for three days, and you just hit the walls Saturday about 6 o'clock. The grandkids loved it. They was in love with it. So I just, I, you know, I know, there's a kid in Kevin that about thinking, I, when did you start preparing? What did you tell me?
For, for connection to 2000. Six weeks ago.
Six weeks, yes, really. Yeah. Jeff Dunn, as usual, and our staff, and the fire department, uh, they came in, and he kind of, you know, Sunday morning, and it's clean, I mean, it's, they did just a fantastic job. Police Department has a lot of, of work to do, and they're very busy, and we thank them. And, uh, we're very grateful. Minister's present, thank you for that. We love, we appreciate that. Today, we met with, uh, the school staff, a lot of fun. Our producer and I, and Chief Kepke, we're, we met with, uh, our new superintendent, Matt Crispin, and we got to address the staff, we had breakfast with them, and, uh, it's been ground running, you know, there's a lot of changes, but I think they're going to do well. Thirteen new teachers, very interesting. Teachers came coming from Alaska, right? One of Alaska, the Carolinas, about Arkansas, and they're doing a nationwide search for good teachers. They really are, you know, they're, they're optimistic about the year. And I do want to mention, September 7th, I know it's in your business, but we're having an unofficial kickoff to 2021 celebration, we're calling that Norton Days or Sam and Mary Days, and that's going to be held on September 7th. It's been 200, 200 years ago, 2, in 1819, and the Nortons arrived here. So that day, we'll have, we're going to start with retreat plannings at 9:00 a.m. at All Moon Park in honor of the Nortons. Opening ceremonies will be, uh, Eddie and, uh, Sue North will be here to speak, Dave Bush will be here. And that'll be have at 10 o'clock at Shines Park. And over at the Historical Society, the Scruggs House, uh, there's going to be entertainment, food, obviously, breakfast, and lots of displays, so don't forget to go to that, so. And that's all I have, unfortunately. And if you would like, I just went and gave you referrals already from, uh, from S S D. Would like to refer the ODOT Quaker Road repaving project to Plating and Finance. And the Marion Road Traffic Lane, which was, is going to be put up at Trail Electric, they will begin the underground work for the new traffic light tomorrow. That's so smart.
So Marion, where are they going to be, where they're going to be, right?
Marion, we'll be at, yeah. If I can add, uh, the one on Irving Street, there's, right now, it's been so busy, uh, there's about a six month, eight time, they're hoping to get that in during this project. The one of Irving, this is, is going to be delayed probably later this year, we'll be put up the new lights there, but we will have a new light there to match the others. So it'll be at this entryway for, and that's all for today. Thank you, Madam President.
Questions or comments regarding the mayor's report and service safety director, Mr. Truka?
Oh, I got a question. What, why have they built, why have they built a detention barn on South Highland? What, what is that about?
And where's the detention house? Is that a county property there?
Back, what, or county?
You talk about the county.
Yeah, but it, it mortars the Highland Avenue. I suppose, I mean, uh...
I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know why.
I just want...
They were going to use that area for outdoor storage of items, and maybe they just made a...
Was it that anticipation meeting of the paving?
I, I wasn't even aware of the county, you know, but I, I...
Yeah, the county.
Okay, I'll check in on if there's anything, but I'll get your answers.
Anything else?
Yeah, I got one.
Mr. Wireball?
We're going to plant trees out all over, but what about the stumps that's been out there?
Yeah, we're, we're, the stumps, we, we're going to put out a bid this fall. Uh, we waited on the stumps, um, for a couple reasons. The, everyone's very, very busy with the tree service of summer, and, and they're not nearly as busy going into the fall, so we probably give a better price. So that's going to, the stumps are going to be, uh, put out for bids in September.
Okay, and then I got one more on the pool. I've heard a lot about pool passes. Where are you going to put pool passes up?
Yeah, everything's going to be, everybody has pool pass this year. I think it will be free pass next year.
Okay. Anything else? I need a motion then to... That was my question. Recur the ODOT Quaker Road Repaving Project to Plating and to Finance.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Foat. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you. Moving on, we already did the service director, law director.
Thank you, Madam President. A couple of things real quick. Uh, as you know, we're working on teardowns on four properties that went out to bid. We only had one bidder, uh, company of Cleveland area, I think it was. Uh, their bid for those four properties was $140,000. Joyce did not throw out a check, so, uh, we were rejecting that bid. Uh, we're going to try to work with some companies and some of the local regular companies that work with Land Bank and see if we can squeeze some of those in, and because the three of the four are immediate needs, I mean, they, they've got to come down. The Schwindt Building played a problem for decades. It'll take another years, but the, the other three are just for anything, so we got to come up with something there, so we're going to be working on that. Landon, uh, over in the zoning office, uh, got with me, was in the last week, this crap respectful, so, um, he'd put together this notice, and we talked about this back in the spring, um, and we're, we're talking about it again, unfortunately, so, um, campaign sign courtesy notice. I believe everybody has a copy of it, but I don't want, I, I want to be very clear, so that everybody knows, but if, uh, political candidate signs are exempt, they don't require a permit, but they still have to meet the other provisions of the code. Specifically, 1191.06 requires that the signs can't be erected without a permit, but they shall not be located within a public right-of-way, which means the tree line, nor be affixed to any public utilities to your pole. In addition, they can't be located where it create a safety or visibility hazard. We've tried to stay away from this a little bit in the past, especially with political signs, because, you know, and for sale signs, because we know a lot of houses don't have anything except a tree line in the front yard, but, um, it's, it's something that looks like we're going to have to start enforcing, um, because there's been some problems and there's been some complaints, and, uh, well, they, quite so far, I guess, but, um, that's something that's, that's going to have to be dealt with. So as you're out there, you're putting up your signs, please be aware of that. Uh, the second part, 1191.07, general requirements for temporary signs. Banners must be less than 20 square feet in the area. Those are permitted, provided they're secured in each corner and as to prevent movement. One temporary freestanding changeable copy sign shall be permitted in non-residential districts. Trailer signs can't be permitted in temporary, as temporary signs in only the LIC and general industrial districts. Four portable signs, uh, as defined in 1191.02, shall be permitted as temporary signs in the downtown business district, things like the, uh, sign we use for the Art Park movies, provided such signs are secured and are anchored as to prevent accidental collapse. Temporary signs must comply with the nuisance and condition provisions of section 1191.09 here and temporary signs in violation of 1191.09 must be removed. There's no mention on temporary sign advertising or providing sources, I think that be allowed to remain staged for more than seven days past the date of the event. So, look, campaigns and, and things are very, very important. I get it, I do it, um, but, um, we have those rules the council set forth, we have to enforce them, um, and, you know, quite frankly, Mr. Grove and, um, Mr. Hill of Landon are pretty busy, um, so, you know, just trying to hold them out. We're going to post this on the website, it'll be posted, it'll be with Gary, make sure it's up on the, on the TV, um, and we're going to come back probably after Labor Day, and we're going to have to start enforcing it, so, just there, but please be aware. A couple of things that I do have for appropriations. We have... We have a very strange ordinance, nine oh five oh four, which requires any changes to sidewalks, how they're set, the setbacks, those sorts of things, have to be approved by city council. So the Burger King building is going to be building sidewalks all the way around. Therefore, it has to come to council to approve their plan for the sidewalks and copy of that. So I need to refer that to Plating Committee.
So moved. Second.
Who was that? Mr. Myers and Mr. McKeever? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed.
Two other referrals. I would like to refer to council for consideration. Nine oh five point oh four, as to whether or not maybe we need to just put that in zoning so that it doesn't have to come to council when we need to move sidewalks a little bit and let the zoning officer and the zoning business owner deal with that. Similarly, nine oh seven point oh three, which was passed by this body in nineteen sixty-three, limits driveway approaches that go through on the sidewalk to twenty feet. So we have a lot of those that are offending and even it's, you know, if you have two car garage, twenty foot driveways, you know. Yeah, and with commercial properties, especially commercial developments, if there's a sidewalk twenty feet. But technically, that statute says it can't be more than twenty feet. So nine oh seven oh three and nine oh five oh four, I'd like to refer both to Plating Committee to decide if that's really in the best interest of future development.
So moved. Second.
Who was that? Mr. McKeever? Second by Mr. Foe? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. I pay both of those items and are also in Plating.
And one last thing, and Mr. Hill hates.
I'm giving up.
Yeah, Todd hates it when I, I forget to tell you things, but I do have one more thing that I need to refer to the Finance Committee. We are approaching our, on the reservoirs. Our designation of expert witnesses and exhibits and those sorts of things are due middle of September. Therefore, we need to hire expert witnesses, engineers, scientists, those sorts of things, people. So we're going to need money to do that. I don't know how much. Hopefully, we'll have a meeting very quickly, but that'll need to be in finance and we can appropriate the money to pay for the experts that will attend our appointment.
So we need to place the experts for the trial date for the, oh, Finance Reservoir into Finance Committee. Motion, please?
Second.
The SAC, second by Mr. McKeever? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you. Now you're giving up.
I'm giving up. That's, that's more than enough.
Moving on then. Auditor, Mrs. Shepherd?
Thank you, Madam President. I have no reports this evening. And I thought there was going to be no referrals for Finance, but Doc took it away from.
He did, didn't he?
Speak more in there.
He just couldn't stand it. Are there any questions then for the auditor? I guess I don't, how is the new software? Is it becoming more and more familiar, I hope?
It is for Kim and Kaylee. I haven't had a lot of time.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm playing anyway. Let's see how that goes.
Okay.
I'm a little old for this.
I need a motion, and we also have before you the auditor statement cash position dated July the thirty first, two thousand and nineteen. We need a motion to accept and file that.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Foe, second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Before you, you have a treasurer's report for July of two thousand and nineteen for you to look over. We'll discuss that at the next meeting. We don't have anything from the police chief or the fire chief. I need a motion to accept city officers' reports.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Foe, second by the SAC to accept the city officers' reports. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. This is where we have visitors' input regarding reports of standing or special committees and other city officers. Does anyone want me to address council, the C V? Please state your name and address.
Kurt Van Khouzer, sixteen seventy-five South Sandusky Avenue. Mr. Rallitt just said that we're going to start enforcing signs for political that are over twenty square foot in size. I had signs myself when I ran in May that were over twenty square foot in size. Nobody complained. Nobody said anything to me about my sign. So what is bringing on this, all of a sudden, now we're going to enforce the sizing on a sign?
Well, Mr. Hill told me that you came up and seen him last week and inquired about whether or not we were going to start enforcing these things on signs because we had signs that were offending the code on this twenty square feet thing. We tried to stay away from it, especially with political signs, because we know they're kind of temporary. But, you know, if, if people want us to enforce it, then we'll enforce it.
Has there been, has any complaints been made?
Well, as I understand it, you're the one that came up and seen Mr. Hill.
I didn't make a complaint.
Okay, well, you inquired about, he, I wasn't there, so he just said you inquired about whether or not we were enforcing this twenty square foot sign.
Is there any way we could possibly put this in the committee and maybe look at the sizing of the signs? Because I, I really don't think that twenty square foot in size is that big. I mean, that's, that's less than a four by eight sheet plywood. And the, the city had a street ledger, no sign that was over that twenty square foot in size, I think. Those green signs?
What he did in there, four by four.
Four by four is? That's what they put, which is twenty square feet?
Yeah.
Sixteen, sixteen, so it's less.
Yeah, they were four foot by four, I remember.
And it's way, you carried it.
And I also had my chicken barbecue sign made after, so that way I can stick that in my yard in front of my office when that's time to that performance. Yeah, the council decides what the, what the limits are. They can, they can pass whatever limits they want.
I'd, I'd like to ask my council members if one of them would please put that sizing in the committee so we can maybe talk about it Thursday.
Make a motion?
Trying to figure out where we're going to put it. Okay. It's in Plating? Okay. Go to Plating Committee?
I'll make a motion. Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you. Anything else to address council this evening? None? Okay. Do we need recess this evening?
No.
No? Okay, now, this is going to take a little bit different look here this evening. We're going to, we have one piece of legislation that is being read for the first time, and then we have several that are being read for the second time. So we're going to handle each one of those situations individually. So consideration of proposed legislation for the first time.
We have one ordinance, ordinance number thirty-seven, twenty nineteen, amending and supplementing ordinance number sixty-one, twenty eighteen, being the annual appropriations ordinance for twenty nineteen, by appropriating from unappropriated general funds the sum of thirty thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars to the capital outlay line item within the police department category, within the program one, security of persons and property subparagraph, and finally appropriating from unappropriated general funds the sum of two thousand dollars to the material and supplies line item within the auditor category, within the program seven, general government subparagraph, and declaring an emergency. That is referred back to Finance.
Okay, I need a motion then to accept this as the first reading.
So moved. Second.
I'm sorry. Mr. McKeever and Mr. Shaw? Okay? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. I refer this back to the originating committee to Finance Committee. Public participation. Any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that has been read for the first time. None? Committee report on pending legislation. Finance?
Finance is favorable to ordinance thirty-seven dash two thousand and nineteen for free.
Okay, that's the only report we have. I need a motion to accept that report.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Foe, second by Mr. Truca. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. For further consideration of pending legislation, for the second and third readings of proposed ordinance number thirty-seven dash twenty nineteen, which are various appropriations, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Wireball?
Yes.
SAC?
Yes.
Foe?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Ordinance number thirty-seven, twenty nineteen.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number thirty-seven dash twenty nineteen?
So moved. Second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
SAC?
Yes.
Foe?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Yes. McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
SAC?
Yes. Ordinance number thirty-five dash twenty nineteen, the appropriations are duly adopted. Thank you. For consideration of proposed legislation for the second time.
We have five pieces of legislation, two ordinances and three resolutions. Ordinance number thirty-five, twenty nineteen, amending and supplementing ordinance number sixty-one, twenty eighteen, being the annual appropriations ordinance for twenty nineteen, by appropriating from unappropriated general funds the sum of two thousand seventy-two dollars and eighty cents to the materials and supplies line item within the police department category, within the program one, security of persons and property subparagraph, and declaring an emergency. That is referred to the Finance Committee. Ordinance number thirty-six, twenty nineteen, authorizing and directing the City of Visirus Tax Administrator to enter into a debt collection agreement with the Ohio Attorney General for the collection of outstanding municipal income taxes, fines, penalty and interest, and declaring an emergency. That's referred to the Finance Committee. Resolution number two twenty-nine, twenty nineteen, authorizing and directing the Visirus City Auditor in behalf of the City of Visirus, Ohio, to issue a warrant or warrants, as the case may be, drawn upon the appropriate appropriation or appropriations to retroactively pay co-icing construction for services rendered, not to exceed one hundred and twenty-two thousand two hundred and twenty-eight dollars and ten cents, with the federal share of the FAA grant of one hundred and ten thousand five dollars and twenty-eight cents, the state share of six thousand one hundred and eleven dollars and forty-one cents, and the city share of six thousand one hundred and eleven dollars and forty-one cents, without the customary purchase order dated prior to the billing date, and declaring an emergency. That's referred to the Finance Committee. Resolution number two thirty, twenty nineteen, authorizing and directing the Service Safety Director in behalf of the City of Visirus, Ohio, to advertise for bids and entering into contract to contracts, not to exceed the already budgeted one million one hundred and ninety thousand dollars with the lowest and best bidder or bidders for the group three A sewers project, and finally authorizing and directing the Visirus City Auditor to draw a warrant or warrants to payment therefore from the appropriate appropriation or appropriations, and declaring an emergency. That's referred to the Plating Committee. Resolution number two thirty-one, twenty nineteen, pursuant to ordinance thirty-four, twenty nineteen, the Visirus City Council hereby appoints councilperson Doug Foe and Bruce Truca to the citywide community and reinvestment area housing council, for three year terms, beginning retroactively to June sixteen, twenty nineteen, and declaring an emergency. That's referred to the Economic Development Committee.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion to accept this as the second reading.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Foe. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Ordinance number thirty-five dash twenty nineteen is referred back to Finance. Ordinance number thirty-six, twenty nineteen is referred to Finance. Resolution two twenty-nine dash twenty nineteen is referred to Finance. Resolution number two thirty dash twenty nineteen is referred to Plating. And resolution number two thirty-one dash twenty nineteen is referred to Economic Development. This is the time for public participation. Any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that has been read for the second time. No comments? Committee reports on pending legislation. Finance Committee?
Finance is favorable to ordinance thirty-five dash two thousand and nineteen appropriations. Finance is favorable to ordinance thirty-six dash two thousand and nineteen state tax collection contract. Finance is favorable to resolution two twenty-nine dash two thousand and nineteen, the authorization to pay without purchase order.
Thank you. Plating Committee? Resolution two thirty dash twenty nineteen? Economic Development Committee?
Economic Development's favorable to resolution two thirty-one dash one nineteen, citywide CRA board membership.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion to accept these reports.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Shaw, second by Mr. McKeever. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. For further consideration of pending legislation, for the third reading of ordinance number thirty-five dash twenty nineteen, which are appropriations, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
McKeever?
Yes.
SAC?
Yes.
Foe?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Ordinance number thirty-five, twenty nineteen.
Do I hear a motion to adopt ordinance number thirty-five dash twenty nineteen?
So moved. Second.
Wireball?
Yes.
Foe?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
SAC?
Yes.
Ordinance number thirty-five dash twenty nineteen, the appropriations are duly adopted.
For the third reading of ordinance number thirty-six dash twenty nineteen, which is the state tax collection contract, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved. Second.
Wireball?
Yes.
Foe?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
SAC?
Yes.
Ordinance number thirty-six, twenty nineteen.
Do I hear a motion to adopt ordinance number thirty-six dash twenty nineteen?
So moved. Second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
SAC?
Yes.
Foe?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Ordinance number thirty-six dash twenty nineteen, the state tax collection contract is duly adopted. For the third reading of resolution number two twenty-nine dash twenty nineteen, which is authorization to pay without a purchase order, do I hear a motion to suspend the a purchase order, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So move, second.
Fote?
Yes.
SAC?
Yes.
Schach?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Resolution number 229-2019.
Do I hear a motion to adopt resolution 229-2019?
So move, second.
Wireball?
Yes.
Fote?
Yes.
Schach?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
SAC?
Yes.
Resolution number 229-2019, authorization to pay without purchase order is duly adopted. For the third reading of resolution number 230-2019, which is the group 3A sewer project bid contract, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So move, second.
Wireball?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
SAC?
Yes.
Fote?
Yes.
Schach?
Yes.
Resolution number 230-2019.
Do I hear a motion to adopt resolution number 230-2019?
So move, second.
Schach?
Yes.
Fote?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
SAC?
Yes.
Resolution 230-2019 is duly adopted. For the third reading of resolution number 231-2019, which is the citywide CRA board memberships, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So move, second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
SAC?
Yes.
Fote?
Abstain.
Schach?
Yes.
Resolution number 231-2019.
No, you really needed to vote for it, it's not, it's not self-circumstantial, but, do I hear a motion?
Even screwed that way.
To adopt resolution number 231-2019?
So move, second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
SAC?
Yes.
Fote?
Yes.
Schach?
Yes.
Resolution number 31-2019 is duly adopted.
Trying to do the right thing and you're wrong.
Does anyone have any unfinished business they would like to bring up this evening? Okay, moving on, doing miscellaneous business, I have a referral regarding the census. I think you're all aware that in 2020, the census takes place every 10 years in the United States, and we have some, we have some paperwork that we have to do to say that we're participating in the census, especially because we're going to separate the cities' numbers from the counties, so that they're reported individually, is one of the things that we're aiming to do with that, so that we can tell exactly what's in the city and what, what isn't. So, I just need a referral of that to economic development, please.
So move, second.
Motion by Mr. Fote, second by Mr. Trucca, to refer the census to the economic development. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes. Wednesday, August the 21st is the first day for Ucires City Schools. Drive carefully, kids are going to be out in full force. Tuesday, August the 27th, Together We Hurt, Together We Heal is the ninth annual fundraising banquet from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Victory and Truth Ministries. Tickets are $25 each, if you'd like to attend, you can call 419-689-6427. Monday, September the 2nd is Labor Day, city offices are closed. And trash?
Tuesday. They'll all go out, put your trash out by 7:00 a.m.
And your trash out by 7:00 a.m. on Tuesday. Friday, September the 6th is First Friday. Harvest in History is the theme, is from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. downtown Ucires, and there, is there a movie that night?
Not that night, boy, since you brought that up.
Okay.
This Friday.
This Friday night?
August 23rd.
Okay.
Movie night.
Movie night?
That's the last one.
It is the last one.
Last one, downtown's going to be a beautiful evening.
Because you're invested by the task, what's the hint?
Uh, you know when I forget what the hint is?
That's a good one.
Yeah, but it pretty much features traveling across country and scene.
Okay, okay. Saturday, September the 7th is Norton Day, at the Ucires Historical Society from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and also the other items that the mayor mentioned, there'll be tree plantings, and there'll be an opening ceremony at 10:00 a.m. at the Art Park, okay? Any other new and miscellaneous business to be brought up this evening? Not, then, Mr. Rattlet?
Yes, Madam President. I would like to request an executive session of the city council to consider the purchase of real property and personal property, whether it is tangible or intangible, or to consider the sale of real or personal property by competitive bid, pursuant to ORC section 121.22G2.
Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Go with it.
I move at this time that the city council adjourns into executive session with all available elected officers of the Ucires city administration and the service safety director, if available, to consider the purchase of real property and personal property, whether it is tangible or intangible, or to consider the sale of real or personal property by competitive bid, ORC section 1.1.22G2.
Okay, I have a motion that the city council adjourns into executive session with all available elected officers of the Ucires city administration and the service safety director, if available, to consider the purchase of real property and personal property, whether it is tangible or intangible, or to consider the sale of real property by competitive bid, or ORC section 122.22G2. Do I have a second?
Second.
Where did that come from? Mr. Myers?
Either way.
Okay. Roll call, please.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Trucca?